Take attendance. Valerie, is not here. Tony?
Who?
Alan?
Yes.
Greg?
Here.
Michelle? Okay, she's here, I'm sorry. Alicia. I'm here. Kelly? Kelly? Jennifer? Michael?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
And Peter?
Here.
So, the ones missing are Kelly and, uh... My head might have been a little bit...
Valerie, so...
All right, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. You guys are meeting minutes for number four, 2013. Anyone who wants to take it off the consent agenda? All right, hearing no one, then the consent agenda is approved. Report the chair. I have no report of the chair today. Education? Dr. Cosentino, 4.1.
Yes, we're going to start this evening with Mrs. Gallo, high school principal, who has a handout. Um, and she will just, um, review with you the completed schedule. You did get a schedule, I don't know, at some point that was still in draft form. Maybe, um, in the summer or August. And this is a completed one. And so, um, we're happy to share this with you.
Good evening. Uh, Dr. Cosentino asked me to present. That's okay, you can keep pointing it at them. Um, asked me to present on class sizes. What I've done in front of you, and also to report on load, student load per teacher. What I've done that you see in front of you is to simplify what you would get if you... If we ran a computer report, it would be very confusing for you. And really a bother to read, and I'll tell you why. Um, I'll point it out as we go, but there are classes, like art classes, that have as many as three different courses in the room at the same time with the teacher differentiating instruction. So, you would get something like two of this, and four of that, and six of this. Uh, so, what I have typically done, anytime I report on class sizes, is to condense that down to a more readable format. So, what you see in front of you, and please pardon me, I'm going to go through it page by page so I can point out some anomalies, um, is a breakdown of the classes by teacher and, um, a rendering of each section and how many students are in that section. I'd like you to look at the first line on the first page. A blue box which says humanities, public speaking, collaborative with Davies. What that means is, uh, and you'll notice that there are two blue boxes next to one another. These are co-taught classes. And because they're co-taught, um, I wanted to put all the players into place. Christine Chagru teaches the, um, English Language Arts portion of, uh, this particular class, and Jim Stinson, the humanities portion. Collaborative with Davies, and pardon me that I didn't say Mrs. Davies, Steph. Um, is, the reason for this is that there are special education students whose IEPs read that there should be a co-teacher in the room. Whatever that student's needs are, they are such that there should be someone in the room to prompt them in accordance with their own individual needs. Okay? Now, these, these, uh, when Mrs. Davies does this, she does not just simply stand over someone's shoulder and tap their shoulder. Um, first of all, that would be humiliating for the, the student, but it would also be a waste of Mrs. Davies' talent. Um, so what she does is she, uh, meets with humanities program during PLCs, which is professional learning communities time during the day that teachers meet. She helps to plan curriculum. And she also offers her special education expertise in terms of differentiated learning and how, what does it look like to break the curriculum down for our limited students in a variety of ways. So, anywhere that you see collaborative with, that's what it means. You'll also notice that that first block says 27 slash 4. There are 31 kids in that room. Four of them have elected to accept the honors challenge. Um, a contract that they enter into with the teacher that allows them to learn beyond the curriculum, challenge themselves beyond the typical curriculum. Um, in a small school, you can't continue to offer a lot of different, um, honor sections. You would wind up with three kids in a class, or two kids in a class, which is not right and certainly not efficient. I would also suggest that doing this in a differentiated setting gives the students a chance, any student a chance, to challenge him or herself beyond the curriculum. For instance, let's say that in, in this particular class, uh, the honors challenge happens by unit. Each unit of study, you can challenge yourself beyond the curriculum. Well, I might not be ready to do that for the whole year. And I use this example all the time. Um, my son, one of my sons was really never interested in much more than girls and football when he was in school, and he did that really well. Um, but, you know, the curriculum, not so much, especially in the humanities areas. However, there was a unit of study that happened about, um, middle ages. And he and his buddies took it upon themselves to learn a lot about this because they just found it fascinating. They did, um, they, they might have tanned their own leather or made their own heels, this kind of thing. Um, had this been a part of an honors challenge program, uh, my son would not have gotten the whole honors designation because one project is not enough and one, one challenge is not enough. However, he would have gotten some sort of credit within the classroom to do that. And the important message there is that, okay, I'm not the classic honors student. I may not ever be, but I was honors here. Honors doesn't mean you were born with it. It means you work harder, it means you have an interest. So, I, I feel very strongly that that honors challenge is something that should be highlighted on this schedule. Um, so, as you look across, you will see that Mrs. Chagru's load per teacher is 51, um, students. She is an instructional leader. She also has an additional assignment, um, which is, which is fluid, which is writing intervention. Um, she works with students, and she also works with, uh, some of our newer teachers during that time. She will be assigned another class, um, a different class at the, at the beginning of next semester. As we move down, you can see that, um, senior project, Ms. Gillespie has a senior project section. And the first elective course that you see is Alicia Robinson's creative writing section. If you look, it says journalism in what looks like half of a box. There's a, there's a, um, a legend on the side that shows semester one, semester two, where it says OE, OE, that means odd and even, if it's an every other day class. But I wanted to point out the fact that the journalism class does not have a load. That is semester two. And it, it really wouldn't be a very accurate rendering to give you that class number now. There will be students in the next few weeks that will say, I want to take on another class. I'd really love to do journalism, something that they hadn't thought about over the summer or at the end of last year. Um, so, if I gave you the second semester numbers right now, they would likely change by at least 10 percent. So, I didn't feel that that was an accurate rendering, and that's why they're not there. I would certainly be happy to fill them in, um, at a later date if you would like to do that during the semester. If you look down to Doug Winkle's schedule, he is our east-west teacher, which is our senior, um, English class. And you also see public speaking. Public speaking has been incorporated into the 11th grade curriculum and will not be a separate course, although will be a part of our graduation requirements because all of the English, um, classes are, that aren't electives, excuse me. Um, what I also would like to point out is it looks like he has an extra teaching assignment. You see public speaking one. That's not a class. That's because Mr. Winkle has agreed to teach that student public speaking so that it will fit into his or her schedule. Um, he's not compensated for that. That is something that he chooses to do to make the schedule work for our students. As we move down into the second, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, guided study. It's a yellow course with Diane Robbins. You see there's nine students in that. This is the course, uh, the class, excuse me, it's not a course, that allows our students to get special individualized help when they are struggling in school. It's part of SRBI, scientific research-based interventions. You'll have a quiz later, but there's about 10 more I have to give you. Um, SRBI means when a student is struggling in a classroom, beyond what the teacher can do during the confines of the class, they're in, they are given an intervention at what we call tier two, which is a small group or an individualized basis. These students go to a classroom, and they work with specialized software called Odysseyware. The teacher monitors their progress. And the software actually tests them to find out what their baseline skills are. And then the computer designs a program for them to fit those exact needs. So, the teacher is tracking data, the teacher is obviously managing behavior, and the students are getting a specialized program. I, I want to point out the fact, although sometimes it makes people nervous that we're using a computer to help their skills, I'd like to point out that we could never, ever free up a teacher in each of the subject areas, every period, to help every student. This is much more than what people think of as a study hall. Um, it, it is specialized instruction, and yes, it comes from a computer, but I would maintain that it is a higher level of instruction and intervention that we would be able to plan for without, um, really using your tax dollars inefficiently. If you go on to the second page, you see the, um, science and the world language sections. I'd like to point out Heidi Adell. That's the yellow box that says VHS German. Our teacher, Ms. Adell, Madame Adell, excuse me, is teaching 15 students from all over the place in German. We currently have one student, um, registered in German through VHS. Not with Mrs. Adell, it's a different section. Um, and Mrs. Adell's instruction has given us 20 seats for our use. So, it's a very valuable thing that she's doing. I hear the one local kid taking German is quite a kid.
So, I hear.
Yeah. Okay. It, when you get down to band, it becomes truly confusing, and I, I don't mean... Please, uh, don't hesitate to ask me questions. I don't, I don't want to give you enough information, but I certainly don't want to, um, give you too much. If you look at Kevin Klopaki, the first section on the left, it tells that he teaches seventh and eighth grade band and strings seven at the same time. And if you read across seven, eight, seven, you see that there are nine seventh grade band students, 10 eighth grade band students, and four string students. Mr. Klopaki, like all of our music teachers, um, I, I don't know. Maybe they have one of those instruments that you used to see with the things sticking all over the person. But, um, they, they manage to run a very quality music program. And when four kids want to take strings in a particular period, they make that happen in our music department. And again, I have to say, that's the only way we could offer band, strings, and chorus, which is not a typical program in public schools in Connecticut. I'm not saying nobody has it, but it's expensive and it's difficult to manage. We are fortunate enough to have our, our music teachers that are multi-talented and also very flexible educators. So, as you look at that, you can see those numbers. Uh, chorus six, 38 kids, towards the middle of the page with Mrs. Harbison. Um, we're, we're growing even though our population is shrinking. And I, I absolutely know that that's because of the, the strength of the program and our teachers. As you go to the third page, I will, um, point, uh, point you in the direction of VHS. And the 18 that is in there, that is between Joan Temple and Sheila Gambino. They are servicing 18 of our students taking a variety of courses on VHS. Now, they are not instructing them, but what they are doing is a very close monitoring. They stay in touch with the VHS instructors that apply to each of these 18 students. They, um, review their progress, they make sure it's being communicated adequately to our parents, and it simply opens up a new world to Shapath. Um, they're taking classes that, again, we simply would not be able to offer because we don't have enough kids. And running sections with two kids in them is very inefficient and a waste of your money. Um, as we go down, you see simple, simple class sizes next to each teacher and the simple sections. If it's hard for you to read, please don't hesitate to ask me.
What are the Qs?
Oh, quarter one.
Quarter.
Um, Mrs. Files felt, and I agree, felt it was necessary to highlight the fact that these were quarters and not just go by the legend because it can be confusing.
Thank you.
Hmm? We're in the second quarter of the first semester right now. Yes?
PLTW.
Project Lead the Way. That's a pre-engineering program. And our students are, um, doing just fascinating things in the pre-engineering realm. Building things, creating things, being innovative in their approach, working together, um, collaboratively. All those, all those words that you hear when we're talking about 21st century education come alive in this classroom.
Why are the numbers in brackets?
So that I would, I, I put the brackets there so that I would keep it away from the grade or the level so it wouldn't be confusing to find the numbers of students. So, anywhere you see brackets, that's a number of students.
And what sort of things are being, are the VHS for Baswell and Tempo? Tempo, what kind of...
Just about anything that you could think of, and a few things that you couldn't. Um, there are courses, very hands-on courses, um, that VHS will lead the students, the VHS teachers will lead the students through. Um, unlike Odysseyware, the, the VHS is attached to a, a particular teacher. Um, and...
We have a couple of students taking AP Computer Science.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
AP Economics, last time I looked.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have German. We have, um, a couple of medical classes. So, we can get you a list of exactly what everyone's taking.
Right.
But really high-level classes.
Great.
And the nice thing about the computer science is that Sheila Gambino, who is one of the teachers, also can teach that and is very knowledgeable about that. So, she's not only guiding them, she is tutoring them and moving them along.
So, this also gives you an idea of what types of courses we're able to offer, what types of electives. Now, I know you will have questions about differences in class sizes. And I can point you out to examples that will show you exactly why that happens. Um, an English class that is large, as opposed to an English class that is much smaller, is absolutely related to a chorus section that has a whole bunch of kids. This creates discrepancies in, um, class loads. We would love to be able to fix that, and I'd love to tell you that we could. There are going to be some discrepancies. If we want to continue to offer a quality program and a program that shows variety and targets student interest, in order to do that, there will be some discrepancies in class loads. You see it in PE, you see it in Language Arts, um, the middle school schedule especially. Um, those things are created because we want the kids to be able to take more, which is absolutely a part of the secondary school reform plan. Uh, and in order to do that, there will be some discrepancies because there are some courses that we offer that lots of kids like. And when lots of kids are in one place, it's going to have a ripple effect on another place. Anything specific that you point out, I'd be happy to talk about. If you move on to PE, um, you will see that, uh, these, these loads also can be rather discrepant because of the music program. PE is offered opposite the music program. As we move down, you see Mrs. Ermini and Mrs. Boyanju. They are two of our counselors. Um, they were formerly just assigned to the middle school. They are now assigned to sixth through nine. And they teach a developmental, uh, guidance program. So, if it looks like they have a light load, I can assure you, they do not. Um, each of our counselors spends part of one day each week at the elementary schools to expand our offerings. They teach the second step program. Uh, we also, as I said, Mrs. Ermini and, uh, Mrs. Boyanju have taken on the ninth grade so that they're, we are equaling out the loads a bit. And then we start to go into the middle school schedule. And I think I've talked, uh, pretty thoroughly about why. You will see some discrepancies, however. I'm pointing them out so that you can understand some of the ripple effects that happens, uh, when you offer a comprehensive program. The section is, in green is our special education teachers. Um, I want to point out, um, we have Mrs. Davies, who's the winner with the largest load of students, 100. That is because she co-teaches three classes. When you co-teach a class, you are responsible for all of the students in the class. As I said before, not simply the IEP students. So, you are planning for many more students. However, that would be misleading if I told you she was solely responsible for those 100 students. It is a collaborative effort. So, I just wanted to make sure that I pointed out the realities in that situation. Yes?
Would we call classes, um, the structured study, what used to be resource room?
Exactly right. A structured study I would, I would offer is much more comprehensive than the former resource room, which was often looked as simply a homework help situation. Now, I'd like it if every kid had a homework help, but what they're doing is far more important than that. And the goals that they are fulfilling in their students are not do your homework. Their goals are learning strategies to compensate for limitations. So, if you spend all of your time going over their homework with them, you're not going to get to those learning strategies that will take them through the rest of their lives. So, um, sometimes if you change your name, when you change the name and you change the, the goals of the class, you, um, try to reinforce that we're not going back to homework help any longer. And the last person that you see is Mrs. Rivas, who is a part-time teacher.
I just want to say one thing that Kim did not mention. If you go across, you'll see with the seven-period day, every staff member teaches seven periods. One period is a planning time, and one period is a PLC, professional learning community time, where they're meeting with other teachers, where they're planning, they're doing curriculum work, they're looking at student work, they're looking at data. And that was really missing in the past and has been very, very beneficial to our staff as we move forward.
Any questions, Alan?
Uh, I guess, on the load per teacher side, I guess we can assume that some of the lower loads are due to there not being a full 1.0 FTE staff member?
No, most of the teachers that you see in front of you are full-time teachers that teach five classes. But remember, I pointed out that Mrs. Chagru has a non-classroom assignment so that she can service more students.
Yeah, and what about, um, who are Oats and Baslow Temple?
Um, Temple is, Mrs. Temple is the librarian.
Of course.
So, she has, uh...
I didn't know where's Baslow.
Assignments the rest of the day. Mr. Oats, uh, replaced Mr. Charlo. Um, and what needs to happen in that department, Mrs. Files is the, uh, chair of that department along with Mrs. Gambino, um, is that there's some restructuring that needs to occur, some things that needed to happen to restructure the spaces to accommodate more modern learning. And Mr. Oats is spending the first half of the year doing a lot of that work. The second half of the year, he will have a full load.
Anyone else? Peter, I'm sorry.
I have a question. The, uh, current enrollment in the kindergarten classes, I've got two figures here, somewhere between 36 and 41. I'm not sure exactly what it is, which means that, but regardless, which means that in, by the time you get to the ninth grade, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, you would have a class of average of 38 students. How in the name of God are you going to run a curriculum?
I think about that all the time, Pete. And I have to tell you that one of the things that I foresee happening as we get smaller is that, um, we will have more static offerings. And I'll tell you what I mean by that. When students enter the middle school, they have as many choices as we can get for them, but they are assigned different courses, um, during the year. We'll have to work on more of that as students move up and the, the school gets smaller so that we can do some manipulation and try to keep those classes, class sizes, um, the right way. You know, you can have 36 kids in a class, but if you put 30 in one room and six in the other, not so good. So, I, I, what we'll have to do is to structure their learning more. And, uh, they may not have as many choices as they have, or they may have to be offered those choices in a more creative way.
Does that mean you reduce the curriculum except for what's required?
No, it does not mean you reduce the curriculum. It means the, the creative stuff that happens is around scheduling, not around curriculum ever.
I'd like to keep the questioning on this document that she's prepared. What's going on today as far as, you know, kindergarten coming into high school? That's something that the board is going to have to do with. I, I appreciate that you're asking for her opinion. Is there anyone else? Michelle?
Well, I wanted to thank you very much because I know we're there in this double community and, um, getting all the moving parts going in the right direction in all the students. And, and for the most part, I think it looks pretty dumb. I mean, I know it was the first year and, and, um, of getting this scheduled together, and it would be tweaked, I'm sure, as, as things went through. I just wanted to get a, a picture of sort of where everyone was and what, how they were doing. And one thing that I think, just having looked at this just for the first time now, that concerns me just a little bit, is it looks like in the middle school, the total teaching load, I know there are some imbalances and that, that was going to happen, but we've got, uh, 106 students, 99, 101. It looks like they, they're, those class, those teachers have a lot of students in some of our core math, language arts, science classes.
You're absolutely right. Um, you know, we, we have, we, we made a lot of changes from June to Sep... Well, I should say February to September. Um, there are more changes that we will need to make. Using staff more efficient, even more efficiently, and figuring out how to keep these loads reasonable.
Great. And what, and to piggyback onto that, I, I, I so appreciate the efficiency part, and I understand how, you know, being able to share French teachers over the middle school, high school lines, that's, that's really helpful. Um, I just want to make sure that in our, in our quest for efficiency, we don't tack in on the teachers because I think, um, being small and being able to give them, the students, the attention and the differentiation that we're looking for, we want to just make sure that we're not overloading the teachers.
I really appreciate that comment. And I, I think that it would do all of us a, a great service to remember that when class size goes down by 20 kids, it doesn't automatically mean that you remove two teachers. It's not an equal formula. And I will be happy to be as transparent as I can be about where it goes and what effect it has, so on and so forth. But when we start getting up and saying, there's 10 kids here, so we should do two, five, and seven there, I know that didn't add up to 10. Um, it, it doesn't work that way. It, it simply doesn't. And I'll be happy to explain to you each and every time how it does work and what we're going to do.
Right, well, I, I, that's great. And I know that we have some smaller classes coming into the middle school, but it seems to me that the staffing should probably not change for a little while because they're a little maxed out at the moment.
Absolutely, I agree.
What is the, the recommended or the standard, um, um, load per teacher? I don't know.
The, the research on that is, is really, um, not very conclusive. Um, pardon, pardon me, I didn't say that as well as I could have. Um, however, most of the research will tell you that approximately 18, anything below approximately 18 students, you don't have a lot of interaction.
Oh, no, no, I mean, I mean...
But, but when, once you get above 18, and you start going into the 20s and so forth?
No, 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 I mean total student load, like this column, this column over here.
NEAS will talk about anywhere between 75 and 125 students.
Oh, okay, that's what it means. I just want to make sure that all of these are kind of in, in the range. I wasn't talking about class size, I was talking about...
Their, their total load?
Yeah, total load.
Okay.
So, 75, 120. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? All right, Kim, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, and can I just shine a light on one thing?
Sure.
Uh, the French, um, load. Um, I know Spanish is also being taught, but there, there was a time recently where people didn't want us to continue French. And you could see by the numbers here that French is still extremely popular. And I thank you for keeping it healthy as an offer.
You're welcome. I think that, I think I should give the credit to the teachers, however. They do a great job at that. Um, and, and respond to the kids' needs rather than their own.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Gallo.
Thank you.
No, you can't. No.
All right. Next is superintendent's report, Dr. Cosentino.
Yes. Um, I wanted to add something just so you, I know you may have been hearing about, uh, conversation of a uniform regional calendar across the state. It was put into one of the laws, it was snuck... It was put into one of the laws, it was snuck in by the legislature. And there have been meetings with the rest, there are six rests in the state, and I was part of that committee with Ed Connection. And we did, each rest has to submit proposals to the state. So what we just talked about, no decisions have been made, but I did want to just share with you that the start of school would be the week prior to Labor Day, which is what we do now. That spring break would always be the third week in April, which is what we do now. And that common professional development days would, we would try to have the Tuesdays after holidays, which is what we try to do now, so the Tuesday after President's Day, Columbus Day, and possibly Election Day, all PD days for staff. As I said, this came really from a commission that deals with transportation and how they want to keep transportation costs down. So they want to have a statewide calendar. I think after much conversation, they realized that you're never really going to get a statewide calendar. And so they're just trying to have a beginning date, some vacations that are similar, and some PD days. So that's just, I just didn't want you not to hear about it. Yes?
Yeah, I'm wondering, is the state planning to enforce a statewide snow thing where they require the snow to fall on certain days and all that?
Not that I know of. This is, it's, you know, we're, we're doing what the law says. So I just wanted to keep you abreast of that because we, I perhaps been forgetting to tell you about it. Personnel, we have a leave of absences, Donna Alex, secretary here, and Patricia Howard, who is a nurse WPS.
Can I just mention something on that?
Please.
When I saw this item on the agenda, I know that Mrs. Alex recently won the election for tax collector in the town of Washington, and so I assumed she may be leaving her job here. And so when I saw this, I asked the superintendent why she was listed as a leave of absence and this, and the superintendent told me. Dr. Costino, what did you tell me?
I told you, and it's in your packet, that there is a Connecticut General Assembly 31-51 section that talks about leave of absence for certain public and private employees elected to public office. Any person employed in a, an employer that has 25 more people or by a municipality who leaves for a full-time elective municipal job, she'll be granted a personal leave of absence from employment for not more than two consecutive terms of such office. So if she would like to come back after two consecutive terms.
Eight years.
Eight years.
To be eight years.
Two years or terms?
Two terms.
Two elected terms. So she's tax collected for two, two terms for eight years and wishes to come back to her job this year.
Right, or a, a similar job. Doesn't have to be her exact job, but it would have, she would have to return to the secretary.
I was just surprised that it wasn't listed as a resignation.
Yes, so was I.
But that's the reason why.
Okay.
And if I could add, she's been an incredible asset to the guidance department.
Absolutely.
A lot of people don't know that she just herds those seniors to submit their college applications, sometimes doing them herself, and certainly trying to match scholarship opportunities.
Absolutely.
So the guidance department is going to lose a wonderful person, but the tax collecting ability of Washington, Connecticut will increase.
There we go.
Especially if she allows the same thing of paying them herself when people don't, that'd be great.
We only win.
Michelle Gore and I went to the Cade Convention this past weekend and we really had a very enjoyable time. Michelle, you want to speak about it for a second?
You just skip the.
Why don't I skip, I'm sorry.
Al, I had a question about Ms. Howard.
Leave of absence, the other one.
Oh, well, oh, it's in there. She, it's a, it's a medical at this point.
Okay, thanks.
She will be returning.
I don't know, I, I don't know what to say about the convention except that it was, it was really inspiring. The speakers were amazing. The workshops I went to, I learned so much and I feel like I have so much more work to do than I ever did because I went to policy thing. But it was also, it was really interesting, meeting people from boards all over the state. I had dinner with a man who's been on the board in New Haven for 16 years. That was fascinating. You know, districts that are so different than ours, learning about what they're doing to solve different problems. And then all the superintendents are there as well. So it's, I would encourage everyone to go if you, if you can, whether you can go for both days or one of the days. It's just really inspiring, learn a lot, and I brought a lot of stuff home that I need to work on.
Right, I absolutely agree. And I actually won a free registration to the new board member meeting on December 10th. So if anybody would like to go, just email me or Debbie and we'll be happy. And if anybody else would like to go, we can absolutely pay for someone to. But it really, it really is good. You get into the mindset of policy, board procedures, regulations. It, it really, it was an excellent conference this time. I thought the speakers were phenomenal. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about Connecticut Lighthouse Project. Last year at the conference, Michelle went to a workshop on the lighthouse. They didn't have one this time, but basically a lighthouse program was started in Iowa and it really is work to get boards focused on student achievement. You do have to devote probably, they said eight meetings in a year to do it. I gave you some information. They, the, the state does it with the alliance districts, which are the districts that need to focus on student achievement, not that we don't, but that are really, that they're working with. So if we're interested, we can talk about it in the future. I think we have a lot on our plate right now to commit to that, but I think in the future, it might be something that we want to look forward to doing together. So I just wanted to bring out your attention. The other thing, tomorrow night, Karen Files and Debbie Bliven will be here at 6 o'clock for the Chromebook workshop. Can I just find out who's going to be here just to make sure if people are going to be here? Michelle, Allen, that's it, just two?
I got a last minute.
Okay, Pete, okay. Okay, Al.
No.
No?
Emergency out of town.
It's for you.
I hope. I'm sorry, just came up. I, I was hoping it was going to be tonight, actually.
Yeah, it's just, it's fine.
Give her a tutorial tonight then.
Well, well, it's time for tomorrow night, okay, at 6 o'clock. So bring your Chromebooks.
Here.
And then we can always do something about for you at another time.
Is there, is there any kind of written instruction, like for instance, what the kids get when they start school for Chrome? Any kind of?
You got to have some.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything written, is there written stuff?
It's not really written, a lot of it's online.
Online?
On Google.
Okay, and we need to put together a packet also.
Just for reference, like how do you turn it off, that kind of stuff?
Okay, no problem. Okay, so that's great. And I think that's it for me.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent? All right, moving on to item six on the agenda, new business, 6.1, to consider, if appropriate, approved hiring of Fletcher Thompson as architect for PK-5 building project. A, pre-referendum cost of $102,000. B, post-referendum, provided successful referendum of $1,341,000. Dr. Costantino, and then we can move on to 6.2.
Okay, well, I can speak and then Tony can add.
Just so we're at, as long as we're at it, I'll just.
Go ahead.
6.2 is to consider, if appropriate, approved hiring of project manager. Pre-ref, I'm sorry.
Which will be Arcadius. We didn't put the name.
Pre-referendum, $41,400. Post-referendum, provided successful referendum, $562,900. Tony?
The building committee met with, at one, at one point where the project managers we met with Craig, Arcadius, and SDS. They made a presentation, we gave them, what, 45 minutes and a 15-minute question and answer session afterwards. The, they had, most of them had four or five people that came, that their principals that would be working on the project were they chosen. And they each told us what they did and how they did it and so on. The project manager is a, is a group that will essentially be the watchdog for the region. Their sole purpose is to make sure that all of the proper forms are done and the grants and all that sort of thing are put in, that we're getting the best bang for the buck. They oversee every phase of, of the operation. They, for instance, do, there's, well, the next part would be that we also looked at the architects and that we had Castle Boo, Slam, and Antonosi. Now, they also carry with their, in their price is a manager. And now, and, but they're managing just the project they're being hired for, not, they're not overseeing. It's not fair to say that they don't have the best interests of the region, but it's nice to have an overseer that makes sure that they're looking at the best bang for the buck for the region also. So that they would end up working together pre-referendum. Most of the, it was interesting that the architects, this time around, if you compare them to architects that we've had, talked to us in '06 or so, the, these people are heavily vested in, in doing pre-referendum work because they found that without that, there's no job anyway. And so it's in their best interest to help you out as much as possible in that. And I have to say that the Fletcher Thompson sort of rose to the top. They have a track record of about 95% at the first referendum, having, getting a yes vote. And they're, they also have, the other 5% is that they might have to go back two or three times, but all of their, well, their people really were the best as far as convincing us that they really knew what they were talking about, had the experience and had been down that road several times so that they were suited for the job. We also evaluated them on the, what we thought was the, because they're going to be the face of the region to the public in these forums and so forth, explaining the technicalities and the general project. So they came across very well. And, and then we, we went to the project manager, who, Arcadius seems to have the most experience there too, and so that's where we chose those people. So the project manager is really in the, in the game right from the very start until the day you pay the last bill. And.
And we, if I could just add a couple of things, Tony. We, the building committee met many times before we met with the architects to work on the RFQs, requests for RF, requests for qualifications. Then RFPs to the architects, requests for proposals. We devised a rubric which included different areas that we were going to rate them on. It was 60% on their presentation, it was 20% on cost, and it was 20% on their written proposal. So after we had met with them and we all did our paperwork, we came and we talked about them. And then both Bob and Don went and looked at everyone's proposal to make sure we were comparing apples to apples. So you would find that in a perfect example, with the architect and the pre-referendum work, that number was originally, it was higher than some of the other companies, but they included things in there such as site work and a lot of proactive work that the other companies did not include in their numbers. So although it looked like there were companies that were a little less expensive when you compared them across the board, which Don and Bob did, that was not the case. So I just have to say, as someone who was not a voting member but sat in on all of the meetings and sat in on all of the interviews, I think that both Fletcher Thompson and Arcadius will represent the region very well. I think they have a lot of experience, they came highly recommended, and I certainly put my support behind approving both.
All right, Greg.
Now, I was just going to say that one of the things that Arcadius did that actually helped us, not just in elementary projects, but also in the middle high school project, was they made the observation when we were interviewing them, that a number of the items that are in our plan for our middle high school renovations are reimbursable, which is something that we had not expected. And as a result, I think that they will, that's the nice thing about having a manager who's looking at the bigger picture, is they're able to, they're able to see things like that. And it's very important, it would be very important to identify that kind of stuff early because that's what you want, you know, assuming you have a successful referendum, that's what you want in your application, your grant application to the state. You want to get that green light in the first application. So by identifying it now, it assists our thinking in that, in that area. The other thing I'd point out is that the reason why you do want to have good interaction with a, with a manager, overall manager, construction manager, and also the architect, is one of the reasons that, that we were successful in bringing in the elementary school repair project we did a few years ago, was $2.3 million. We brought it despite, things happen on projects. You find a condition in the field you don't expect, and you can run your costs out on. And we found a few conditions like that. We found better solutions. Burnham is a prime example. We did regrading there rather than installing underground drainage, which is going to give us a much greater chance of controlling water better, it's going to be a better, more trouble-free system, and it's going to have a better result. Now, that cost us more money, but one of the reasons we were able to bring that project in under budget, and we did bring it in under budget despite cost overruns, is because we had a good manager and a good architect, both working, doing their respective jobs and allowing us to control the project much better. And of course, we had, we had, you know, Don O'Leary, our facilities manager, in there as well, and of course, Tony, it was an ending in the amount of time he put in. But the point is, with a lot of people working at various angles, we were able to solve problems, do a better job, and bring it in under budget. Much greater chance of that happening when you have proper management. And that's part of it. And then the second thing I wanted, second observation I want to make, or third observation, maybe I lost count, is that by having an architect that's doing more work upfront, it seems counterintuitive, but it's actually smart because one of the problems you get with a construction project like this is if you don't do the proper legwork, you have a greater chance of not taking to referendum and not bonding a sufficient amount of money. And I think that it's, it's important that they do that, some of that preliminary work to make sure that we are not wasting our time and wasting our money with a project that can't work the way it's designed and intended. And that, I think, is one of the, one of the big features of Fletcher Thompson and their design. They were also the one architect that thought out of the box in terms of where they would recommend looking for the, where the, the new school to go and, and their, their design of how they would do it. They seemed to vary, I didn't vote on either, but I attended the meetings to hear what they had to say. And I thought they were very, very out of the box thinking in their design. And, and like I say, the Arcadius people immediately had a great suggestion, which was try to bond as much of this project we think is the most viable. So those were two really good things to recommend, those particular people, they had extreme strengths.
Thank you, Bill.
Couple of questions. First off, where's the money coming from for the pre-referendum 102 and 41-4?
I think Bob is here, right? Is Bob here?
That's, that's exactly who I wanted to.
Bob, why don't you come up?
Come out, Bob.
If you recall, when the budget was formulated last year, we put $68,000 in the line item to do some of the work that's required. There was another $12,000, so that was 72 in total. And then after the budget was adopted, we have successfully lowered the cost of the medical insurance and there's more than sufficient dollars to cover this thing. So we have more than enough of $143,400 that we need for pre-referendum.
Okay, and the charge that was given, both of these people, the project managers, what firm, what name?
Arcadius. They are. A-R-C-A-D-I-S.
Arcadius.
Arcadius, sorry.
Arcadius.
And they, both of these firms worked off of the number, what number did we give them? I mean, they're looking at a feasibility within that number?
Don, do you want to speak to that?
No, it was a free and open bid process. There was no number.
No, 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 what I'm referring to is our, you know, the project we believe should be somewhere in large, in just general terms, under 30 million. I mean, that's what these people were looking at?
They have the ed specs.
The ed specs drove the architectural plans that we paid for from SLAM.
Okay, but the ed specs are what we'd like, it's not what we can afford and what we've, I mean, what was, you know, the feeling about our budget limitations? In other words, I'm sure that Fletcher Thompson would love to design a LEED certified $50 million facility, and that's not what we're looking at. So what was the parameters given?
They, Fletcher, I can answer that. I mean, we discussed that. I mean, they would bring in your project within your budget, and they will do it well. They knew, they know what the general parameters of the budget we were looking at and what we had discussed.
What was, what was the number generally?
I believe, I believe the elementary school is somewhere around $30 million pre-state reimbursement, and they commit at 23 after that.
So they were working within those parameters?
They're working within those parameters, yeah.
Okay, then, also, then, the project manager, post-successful referendum, would basically be a clerk of the works, or would we hire in addition? This person would oversee everything as an independent representative of us. So we would not be hiring anyone in addition like a clerk of the works, right?
No, we would not be hiring anybody.
Okay. And then the other thing is, when we've gone down this road before, the thing that surprised me, and I have no problem with, with the pre-referendum numbers, although $102,000 is pretty, pretty expensive, not so much the project manager. We've never had to commit or contract or approve a post-referendum number of the 1.341 million. Is that a, first off, where did that number come from? Is it a percentage, or is it a flat sheet? What is that?
I believe that is a, I believe that more or less is key to the value of the job. But I will tell you that one of the reasons why it was structured the way it is, with a pre-referendum and a post-referendum components, if you don't structure it properly, then you lose the ability to get reimbursement for your pre-referendum costs. So it's been structured this way to make, to get the maximum extent of being able to get pre-referendum costs reimbursed, whatever extent we can. But you lose it if you, if you separate the two.
No, I don't think that to be the case. But the point is, now we're asking to contract for 1.341 million?
Is the building committee asking the board to commit to these numbers tonight?
No, I, my original thought was just to put the pre-referendum numbers, and then I was given the advice to put down what the post-referendum numbers were because it might come up and you might ask that question.
But you're asking us to approve hiring of post-referendum 1.341, and I would suggest this board absolutely not vote on B for 6.1B or 6.2B.
We would be okay with that.
Because we're committing to a very large expense that we might not want to continue.
Right.
Post-referendum, we might not like this honeymoon situation for $102,000 and want to go to SLAM again, but yet we're committed.
Right.
Tony, is that your understanding, of the committee's understanding, is that we would not be voting on a post-referendum venue tonight?
Quite honestly, I'm not sure about what you were expecting. But I know that we were talking about the pre-referendum.
Is that acceptable to the building committee, that, is that against your recommendation, that we not, that it's okay that we don't vote on the post-referendum number tonight? Is that acceptable to the committee?
I would think so.
Well, more importantly, is that what Fletcher Thompson wants us to do? If we hire them as a pre, are they saying, okay, we want both ends of it?
No. We could definitely go with just A's.
If you hire them to do all the pre-work, it would sort of follow that if you, if the referendum is positive, then you wouldn't want to necessarily go out and hire somebody else to start relearning what they just did.
Oh, I agree, but where is this 1.341 million coming from? I mean, I don't know the fee.
Out of the bonds.
No, 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 where are we misunderstanding each other? Why are we paying them 1.341? It's a very specific number.
Don could speak to that, because Don, can't you speak to how that number was devised, at least?
Well, hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute. The issue was for the board, first off, that we got to vote on that post-issue tonight?
We're trying to find out whether it is something contracted required by our voting on pre. And that's what we need to know. Don?
It is not. We bid them separate, pre-referendum and post-referendum, but we asked them for total cost. Dr. C provided you the total, so that you were upfront about what it would cost in the end if we got this successful referendum.
Okay, so there's nothing binding in there?
We haven't contracted any of this.
Is 1.341 inclusive of the 102? Is that our total cost? Or is that in additions? Okay, I would strongly suggest that this board not contract or interpret this as just advisory, but a real approval to contract for both Bs of the section. So I would make a motion that the board consider and approve hiring of Fletcher Thompson as architect for pre-K5 building project on a pre-referendum basis of $102,000. And I would also make a motion.
Hold on, hold on, let's do this one at a time.
Okay, one at a time?
We have a motion and a second on the architect. Is there any discussion? Alan?
Boy, you were first with you and I'll go first, before the motion she is.
Yeah, I just had a question, and I don't know if Don or Greg or Tony, about the one, the Bs part, the 192, is that B sort of within the standard? I know that's usually a percentage of the project, is it in the, in the range of what's typical?
Well, I'll put it this way, all the fees were involved, they weren't wildly divergent. And when you finally did the apples-to-apples comparison of everything, which actually, which you found out is, I forget, I forget who, we're not hiring the most expensive architect or whatever, I don't think. But the fees were different, but they weren't so far divergent that this was way off of the limit.
Susan?
Will we be able to see what the $102,000 buys in terms of what exactly, what exactly is that? I mean, I can, I can appreciate the time that it took to do all the interviews, and they came out as the one that building committee recommended, but for $102,000, I think, before I'd feel comfortable voting for it, I'd want to know exactly what that, what that means. I mean, I heard a little bit about them, Fletcher Thompson would be available to answer questions in a public forum. I mean, what, how much, you know, what, what would be, what's the understanding for $102,000? What does that get us? What is $102,000?
They would be, they would be developing off of the ed specifications and the rough schematic that goes with that, the certifiable cost to go to referendum. We need somebody that has the expertise to get a bottom-line number for us to get to that referendum. And so they have to be cost estimating, they have to do the interpretation out of your ed specifications of what you're looking for in a K5 school, then put together a pre-referendum package of information that would satisfy bond requirements and bond council, because you need that cost level for bond council to pass, that it's a referendable number, that it's just not something that somebody came up with. They, they need to do all that work. The oversight comes in by way of the project manager at that point. They get in and make sure that nothing's missing, that what your desire is, is in fact what you're going to get, that they've included everything. Because if we miss anything in that referendum process, there's not another opportunity with the state. The state's very strict as to what we can put in them. And the, what is it, tax-free status on those bonds need to be satisfied through the bond council. So they have to do all that work.
They're full architectural plans?
Hold on, Susan.
It's not full architectural plans to go to build it at that point.
But aren't they going to do that?
It's enough plans. It's enough plans to get you your money. After the referendum is successful, that's when they start putting pencil and walls and everything together.
We have, there's a lot of people who have questions. Is that also?
The only other question I had was relative to the project manager, that's for the pre-K to five building.
We're not having a project manager.
Got it, okay.
Michael?
Just to follow up on your question, I appreciate you, that you're trying to answer it, but I would still like to see more of a breakdown for that $102,000. What percentage, for example, I know you mentioned that they really feel that information sessions are critical. What percentage of that $102,000 do they anticipate would be the chunk that they would need to spend? Are we talking about, you know, three, three, three one-hour sessions that they would anticipate? Are we talking about?
They broke that down in their proposal. I don't have it with me today. It's $2,600.
Hold on.
Is it $2,600? $2,600 hours of pre-referendum work that Fletcher Thompson would do for that money. They need to, they need to get an understanding of the three towns, what their makeup is, what kind of attitude there is out there, what kind of questions might be answered, that might be asked.
Just to keep, I mean, that seems an extraordinary amount of time, and it, part of it, I mean, I certainly see the need for them acting as a conduit of information to the public, since they're the architects. However, my concern would be that they're also morphing into a lobbying position, which I would have some real concerns about.
Excuse me, but they, that's not their job at all. Okay, what they do is present facts, explain the facts, which can get fairly technical and can get fairly convoluted, I mean, if you really need to know the project. Then it's up to the board or any other, anybody else that wants to lobby for or against the proposal. But they're only dealing with the facts of the project and not, not any lobbying. You shouldn't, they're not going to be doing the, you ought to do this because, they're going to be telling you what the facts are, what, how it was constructed, what went into the facts that they're presenting.
It's still, and again, I'm, I'm not a builder, I'm not an architect. It seems like an extraordinary amount of time that they would be setting aside to do that, if it's just the facts that they're reporting as they see it. It seems high to me, but.
There's also schematic design services.
That's all, it's $2,600 hours.
Alan?
Following along this line, I have a, I have a multi-part question, but my first one, to get to the 102, what did they drop off of their original $293,000 estimate? Could anyone answer that?
Don. I wasn't, Don and Bob did the leveling, so I don't know what the answer is.
Go ahead, Don. We'll share the load here. I'll make you stand too. We had asked them to take a look at reducing that number to, to just those services that they felt would help us to get the right number to the community and into referendum. Fletcher Thompson does a lot of front-loading in their project. They wanted to pretty much come up with a full design of the building, a full design, a full schematic design, and identify all aspects and all costs. The other three architects were taking a square footage approach. They wouldn't have done any full schematic designs until a later date, where, after referendum. So we've asked Fletcher Thompson, and I can't exactly give you the line items that they took out, but we've asked them to take another look at it and get it to a level where they felt they can be successful and minimize that cost in comparison to the other three architects.
Because it's, it was substantial, it's like two-thirds was taken away. So I'd imagine that they and you are still comfortable with their abilities, given that they're un-front-loading a lot of this.
They assure us that they are. They've, they've basically made a statement in their, their fee proposal that everything is included, and that they feel comfortable that they can do the job for that amount.
And that, for some reason though, in this, you know, one of the, I think this is what Mike was alluding to, is that Tony said something along the lines of your confidence in them was because of their high success rate of getting a yes vote.
That was one fact.
And also being the face of the region for this project. So seeing as the pre-referendum work, apparently, even though we're not seeing a breakdown, seems like the pre-referendum work is apparently partly information gathering and schematic creation, which is a very rough conceptual design, sufficient for, you know, ballparking with a certain amount of, percentage of error, a number that could be bonded. And a certain amount of public relations. And it's the public relations part which I find interesting, because if an architect is chosen with a certain confidence of getting a yes vote, it means that there's got to be quite a bit of public relations, which, as Mike said, interprets, he interpreted it as lobbying. And now, if it's just the facts, then I'm not sure why are, as I said, I'm not seeing it in theirs, but in some of the other perspectives, they actually were line items for, for public relations. And I think, you know, even what you were saying earlier about the amount of time of that $2,600, some of that's for schematics. But another percentage of that is for information gathering or talking to the different towns and getting feelings. Well, you should know the feeling of Bridgewater right now for free. So unless, unless you're trying to change those feelings, which is part of the guarantee for a yes vote, I know, I'm not quite sure how much strong-arming is involved in this. They can say, oh, you know, we can take any town, turn them around, just pay us this much, and we'll get that.
Alan, do you really believe that the architect is going to be strong-arming the citizens of any of his town?
How is it, how is it that the concept is they are chosen by their high percentage of being able to get a yes vote? What does that mean?
Can I answer that?
I would assume, if I may say, I was not there. I assume that typically their projects do not involve three towns in which there are disparate feelings, and they present the best possible information to get a yes vote, that people are united about wanting a new project, but they have to do it at an affordable price. They're going to have to deal with different mechanics here, we understand that. I don't believe them to be, whatever the word you just used, you know, to be strong-arming the citizen, if I may, please. Tell it.
Tony wanted to ask my question.
Tony?
Well, we may be having a difficulty here with the term public relations, but anyway, certainly as Jim has pointed out, that there wouldn't be any strong-arming at all. But for instance, you say, well, we already know where Bridgewater comes from. Well, in order for them to do a presentation, I think they're going to want to go talk to some of the people in Bridgewater and say, well, what is it specifically that is bothering you that we could answer? And it may be that a side front wing, a side front side, they're going to be able to read it. No, I mean, you know, there may be questions other than, you know, we don't want it, or whatever, but it's.
Okay. All set?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned that the, this board on June 17th passed a motion to put forward a referendum on amending the regional plan. It didn't have anything in that motion about a bond referendum, which is a separate issue. The cost is a separate question, it'll be bonded separate, the referendum will be separate, the question will be separate, those money will be bonded separate. The motion that was passed on June 17th was to put this idea of amending our regional plan to the people for voting. And why haven't we done this, is my first question. And why are we massively dragging our feet on this, is my second question. It is not in the spirit of the board, I believe, that made that motion on June 17th, to delay that referendum on the regional plan until the following year. to delay that referendum on the regional plan until the following year. So it's not going to happen before 2014. That's months and months after the board voted to send this idea of amending our regional plan to a vote. It could be a year, the way things are going, to get this to be voted on. So I would suggest we do what the board said it was going to do, push this idea of talking about costs and contractors and architects and who knows what's coming up next week, because every week there's a new hire on the agenda. And let's see what the people want to do about the plan itself first. And then, if they want to amend the plan, let's get the architects, let's get the project managers, let's get everybody in and get the best project we can. But if the plan fails, the amendment of the plan fails, all this money is just simply used for nothing. I can think of a lot of other things that our seven-hundred-and-ninety-some-odd students could do with a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Here, here.
A lot of things. I think all of us could have a project we could think of that would enhance the education of our kids. So let's do what we said we were going to do and put it to vote. I'd also like to say that I, I take Alan's point very well. I've been concerned about the fact that this board sounds like it's advocating and lobbying for a particular end result of this referendum. This board has gotten in trouble for that kind of activity before. We've been centered by the state. So I think we have to be very careful about simply putting it out and letting the people vote on it. We cannot be for or against it. We have to put the facts on the table and let the people vote. We cannot advocate, we cannot lobby.
Kelly, if I may. First of all, I, I'm not the board's attorney, but I don't believe that's true. The board cannot spend public money to advocate for a budget once a referendum has been, date has been set. The State Elections Committee did rule that a mailing that was mailed out was in violation of that. Certainly, we're all advocates. If this project is put forward, anybody can say anything they wish. I assume the board, I don't believe that we have to be completely neutral, but we'll get to that when the time comes. So I don't believe the two are similar. You said the board was sanctioned about that. It's a completely different thing. I don't believe any member of the board to be sanctioned for speaking their mind about whether they believe the project should be approved or not. As regards to your first point, the spending of the money and the separation of the vote on the amending of the regional plan, you've raised that point before at previous meetings. It's been said to you that the feeling of the majority of the board, most of, all the board, and maybe you were not at the meeting, as I recall, was that in order to put something like this to the public, we simply couldn't put the issue of, will you, do you want to vote to amend the regional plan, period?
Jim, there's no, there's no feeling.
Kelly, may I please finish?
No, because there's no feeling. There's either a motion and there's an action of the board, or there's not. There's no feeling.
Kelly, I'm, I'm trying to answer what you have to say.
But there's no feeling, Jim. It doesn't count for anything of Robert's rules of order. It's a motion to put the plan to vote.
All right.
Yet again, I will read, but I will not read all of it, but the yes vote was Tony, Laird, Michelle, Jim, myself. The noes, Michael, Emily abstained, Susan, Franny, Greg, Alan, sadly Kelly wasn't here. But the motion that was approved and now stands, and by our rules has to be supported by this board, was this proposed amendment to the regionalization plan to be contained in this report, because the motion was to prepare a report to change the regionalization plan. This proposed amendment to the regionalization plan to be contained in this report shall be Region Twelve Long Plan Range Planning Committee Option Two B, which includes the construction of the new pre-kated grade-five building on the Shippensburg campus, along with renovations to the existing Shippensburg campus. So all of that motion that we know is approved, that we are supposed to support as a board decision, includes the detail of Two B. So we need the number. So we're here trying to get a good, fair number through a process, which is a hundred and two thousand dollars for Fletcher Thompson, not anything more at this stage, but I think that that is a fair thing, that we as board members have already supported. We just can't relitigate this every single meeting.
If I may, what I, I wanted to finish what I was saying, which was that it was thought that the, to put a question like that to the public, it would be more likely, it would thought it would be, it was best to put numbers with the question of whether the region should be amended to the public so that they would make, be able to make an informed decision. Michelle.
Uh, just two things. I, I did go to the presentations of the architects, and I think when talking about the PR or the passing of the referendum, I think what struck us about the Fletcher Thompson group was the professionalism and their ability to answer questions and put forward a coherent plan. And so I think that's really what we're talking about for the pre-referendum, their ability to go and answer questions and present a project that makes sense and where all of the pieces are filled in, there are no missing numbers, and it's thoughtful. So I, I think that's, that, that is what, that was the basis for that component of that decision. And the other thing I just wanted to say was that back in February, when the board just put, moved money into the pre-referend, into the, I forget the budget line item, but it's for services, it was because we knew we were going to need to hire people in order to prepare a referendum, so we did that almost a year ago. So we, we've been planning to do this for a long time.
Susan.
As it stands now, we have a motion to, to consider the A in both six, six-one and six-two.
No, just six-one.
Well, six-one is what we are talking about, but I, I do think the hundred and two thousand is a very specific number that represents very specific services that have already been discussed and, and reviewed. And I believe in an informed vote, I think we should table that consideration for those monies until the full board can review what that money specifically would be for. I think that is reasonable, and the next meeting's not that far away.
Okay. Michael.
I, I agree. I mean, if, if I was hiring an architect for my own home, I would want to see something in writing. I mean, that just seems a very reasonable request. I appreciate that people are able to verbally answer questions, but I still would like to see it in front of me. I'm, I'm bothered by the idea that to get to the referendum, the number, which I think we all agree is something that we want to do, we want to go to referendum and rest this once and for all, but right now, I'm seeing that they want a hundred thousand dollars to be able to give us a number that we could put for referendum. And apparently there are other things that they feel that they need to do too. Personally, I want an architect to be an architect. I don't need an architect to be a public relations specialist. I don't need an architect to be a marketing director. I don't need that. Maybe other people disagree with me, but that's how I feel.
Great. Well, good luck finding an architect that doesn't do that, because everyone did, every one of them had an impressive rate of, of project approvals. We looked long and hard. We tried very hard to find an architect that planned to do nothing, wasn't going to be an advocate or stand in favor of the thing and had a lousy record, but we just couldn't find him. I mean, so that, that's really what it comes down to. I mean, that's what they do. They're, it, it, yeah, is there going to be an architect going around to meetings, showing the pictures, giving some design cues, showing what they want to do for the region in terms of what the school could be? Yeah, of course, that's what's going to happen. But guess what? It's always that way. This isn't anything shocking or surprising, but they, we tried really hard to find someone that would just punch it, but it just, it just don't exist. Kelly.
It seems to me that we have a lot of fairly decent ballpark numbers on what it will cost to renovate the middle school, high school. We also have some good ballpark numbers on what it will cost to build a new pre-K through five elementary school. We have numbers from builders, we have numbers from financial analysts, we have numbers that have been presented to the community in the past. I think we're not flying blind there. But if you would like to hold the process of having the referendum on the amending, amending of the plan up for detailed, really detailed financials, then I suggest that you make a motion and tie the two together, because I do not see that they're tied together right now. And we're adding a great deal of expense pre-referendum that I don't think is warranted. So Jim, if you want them to be tied together, I don't see that they're tied together. I don't see that there's anything here that says we have to wait till we have detailed financials, an entire building team in place, before we have a referendum to amend the regional plan. That's my suggestion.
All right.
Well, um, the question about where's the detail, I mean, we were all given the agenda for Wednesday, November thirteenth at three o'clock, the building committee, and we could have all sat in on, on the interviews and asked our questions and gotten our detail. I don't know who in the end finally was able to come, but it sounds like the committee spent a lot of time and asked appropriate questions, and it was open and available to all of us. And we operate on a committee basis in this board. I would hope in my finance committee meetings, we go through a hell of a lot of detail, and then we make a recommendation and are happy to receive questions, answer questions, but, you know, the committees make a recommendation. I don't see why, after this arduous process that was open to us here and the public, that can't stand as our source of information. We could, if people are concerned about the balance of how much is actually perhaps going to be more PR, although I tend to doubt that, I, and I, I would hope to see a lot more, you know, schematics and location and the detail of, of how we're going to accommodate Ed's specs under a certain budget target. We could make the charge that the building committee, who I guess would be overseeing this process still, make sure that Fletcher Thompson realizes that we want the facts, just the facts, and maybe some of the PR, the reviewing, the interviewing of the community is essential, but we are sensitive to perhaps an oversale. That could be the charge of this board to Fletcher Thompson. There's no problem with that. We can handle the scope of the, of the, of the work to a certain extent, but the work, all the, the interviews were already done, it was all available to everyone.
Alan.
And, and that's a, a good point, because I think in this, I think each of the architects told the committee that these projects don't happen unless you have community support, right?
Right.
And I'm sure, although I'm not, the, I think I was actually more sure about than what I'm about to say now. I would hope that as a response to that, someone in that committee might have said, well, we actually have one community which is not on board with this. And at that point, the architect should either say, well, this project won't happen then, or they would say, well, we can help you with that. And that's what I'm concerned with. If any architect worth his salt would know that these school building projects do not happen unless the community is behind them, and if they advised the board's building committee about this, then something had to happen in there, which continued the enthusiasm of the board's committees to continue this project. Because if it didn't, then what happened was some kind of consideration for the architect's prowess in getting that community behind us. And that, that, that's the point that I think we're making about this. But the other point of having a community not behind this is that even if seventy-two thousand were, were line item for this, back in the spring of last year, this year, we're looking at double that already, and we've already spent more for this. And I really wish that since we keep talking about all of our, regardless of our different factions and our different feelings, we all talk about how we all want an answer to the question. I think that's one thing we can agree on. But I would prefer that we get an answer to the question as cheaply as possible, not as expensively as possible. And I said this a couple of weeks ago at the last meeting. And I feel that although I can understand how other towns might be interested in the final number or the scope of this project, that really is moot if the project is not going to exist. And I'm not sure how much more clear I can be with my free advice here, is that it's not going to happen. We need to reach the point where all of us, besides just me and my fellow representatives from Bridgewater, understand it's not going to happen and move on. It would be good to be able to do that without spending a hundred and forty-three thousand more dollars for it. And beyond that, Valerie, thank you for rereading the, the, the motion that you read last time as well. But the thing is, the motion doesn't in any way feature numbers at all. And originally, when I didn't think this would be this expensive to discover the number, I had a problem with that. When the, when that motion came up, I know the, the selectmen of the boards of finance from three towns were behind that option, which is why it influenced our decision to, to vote for that option as a choice in last June. I would also like to point out that the microphone is very strong, and I noticed in reviewing a couple of other meetings that side comments do, are picked up and are quite obvious, so I'll let you know that. Anyway, sorry for the interruption. The, the, the three towns together brought that referendum up with, that, that, that option, Two B, up with the idea that there would be numbers attached. The numbers fell off before it came to our meeting, and I was not happy about that then, because I thought we needed to have firm numbers. But the problem is, it's going to be very expensive to get these firm numbers, and it would be a lot better if we could actually follow that motion, which has no, it may have the feeling or the inference or the concept of needing numbers, but we could actually fulfill the requirements of that motion that we all voted on, whether for or against last June, and put forth a referendum without numbers to find out whether we even need to spend any more money on this at all, or whether we need to go back to the drawing board and find something which is amenable to all three towns and not just one or two of them.
Peter.
Um, first of all, in response to Kelly's issue, I floated a motion to find out what the board was thinking. The board told me they were not thinking like you were thinking. You were not at that meeting. I was thinking like you, I thought that was the proper procedure. The board said no. So I accepted the will of the board and removed my motion from the floor. The second point I want to make is that when you hire an architectural firm, they don't sell the project. What they give you is the truth of the project, what it represents, what the board is willing to buy and what they'll get for their money. They don't go out and lobby. I mean, you hire, we're the lobbyists supposedly. The board of Ed would be lobbyists for a project in their own communities. And the third point is, in my thirty-some-odd years of dealing with budgets in the three towns and doing probably over ten thousand mailings, I have never found anybody in any of the towns, selectmen, finance committee, board members, taxpayers, who speak for the whole town and know what everybody in that town is thinking.
Here, here.
I have floated so many letters, pro-budget, anti-budget, and the people you think, even on the board who would support your position, presents all sorts of arguments, didn't. There were selectmen who had an opinion on the budget. Didn't turn out that way. There are people in this room who have an opinion on the buildings, and you can't tell me they speak for everybody in the, in the town they are head of or, or whether they are representative of the town or not. They didn't get, your selectman, he didn't get sixteen-hundred votes in the town of Bridgewater. The selectmen who have been elected don't get all the votes in the town. So the people in the towns don't agree completely. We're going to have to go out to the public with a project that we believe is in the best interest of the children. And that's what we have to do. If the people wanted to feed it, that's their right to do so. But to sit here and tell us that they know what the town, sixteen, seventeen, hundred, two thousand people in the town are thinking is a gross miscalculation. So I think it's time for us to move the question, to go out, put it forward to the taxpayers. The board does not want to float the, the issue which Kelly raised, and I raised it, so it's the end of that, so we, I think we should go forward. This is what the, the will of the board wants to do, we have the votes to do it. I don't see a hundred and two thousand dollars as a big issue in a twenty-two, twenty-one million dollar budget, so I think it's time to go to work.
Did you make a motion to move the question?
Yeah, I moved the question.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to move the question that's been seconded. All those in favor of moving the question, which would end discussion on the pending motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand.
All those opposed, raise your hand. Any abstentions, raise your hand. You got everybody?
One, two. Yes.
What's the vote?
Five yes. Five, six, seven, yes.
Eight, yes.
Twenty-three, yes.
There wasn't eight.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes. Four, no's.
Hold on, please.
Four no's and one abstention.
Seven yes, four no's, one abstention. All right, the motion to call the question passes. So there's a motion on the table to approve the hiring of Fletcher Thompson as architect for a pre-K5 building project at a pre-referendum cost of $102,000. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Okay.
All those opposed, raise your hand, please.
Okay.
Any abstentions, raise your hand, please. What's the vote now?
Eight yes, four no.
The motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve per the recommendation of the building company, the hiring of a project manager, Arcadis, for a pre-referendum cost of $41,400.
Is there a second?
Second.
Michelle, second. Is there any further discussion?
Could she accept a friendly amendment to say building committee rather than building company? I think that's what she intended.
Oh, my goodness. Building company, thank you.
Kelly.
I'd like to be advised by the building committee or whoever can tell me, what are the other major expenses you anticipate happening before a referendum is held? We have 100,000 here, forty-some-odd thousand here. What's next? Are there any other major expenses pre-referendum that you see happening?
I would suggest that Bob put it into that.
I think the only thing you have left is advertising. Everything else is in there.
They'll have you.
You mean the cost?
Right.
That we have to bear after this?
Right, correct. It's advertising.
And the $41,000 is used?
Pardon me?
I think the question is...
We have to cover the classified legal ads.
No, no, no. I think the question is, sorry, what's our 41.4 going to buy us with this project?
No, that's not the question. The question is, what other money?
Well, I thought the question was what beyond the 41 was that we know.
Okay.
All right, Michael?
That actually is my question. What is the 41.4 going to buy us? If they are project managers, are they managing a project that doesn't exist yet, which is what it sounds like they're monitoring, I guess Fletcher Thompson, and making sure that in their pre-referendum budget that that isn't grossly inflated? Is that what their purpose is?
That's part of it, and they're also overseeing that Fletcher Thompson has designed or is in the process of implementing the ed specifications, or the covered old pieces in the cost, and they'll read cost and make sure that the cost estimates are accurate. That's their charge.
The other piece, if I can add to that, is they would also oversee the work done in this building, the repair work in this building, which will be presented next meeting. So they're doing both pieces. They...
Hold on, for that price?
For that price.
For that price.
For that price. They also, I do want to let you know that this company was the company that helped us as we vetted the architects, and they did it at no cost. And that was not part of the reason why we hired them, but they said, you know, it's a service. We're doing it for you. They are very knowledgeable. They will help us, again, as Greg mentioned, to see what part of the repair is reimbursable by the state. It's as in any, if you have any good project manager, they will be able to see and really look at our interests and protect them as all of the schematic drawings are drawn and whatever, so that you do not have all of these change orders, et cetera, at the end and during a project, which adds to the cost. So that's, and do you want to add anything, Don? Did I forget anything? No?
Susan?
A couple of points. Even though the Fletcher Thompson vote was approved and we are looking at the 41.4, the information would still be nice. A breakout would still be nice. Should not be kept in a bubble. It should be out there in terms of what that money will buy. It should be knowledge. It should be knowledge to this board and public knowledge as well. 2,600 hours...
Hold on, Susan, to find, it is public knowledge. It was presented at a public meeting, and anyone...
The specifics?
It's not being hidden. Yes, they have it.
We'll have to get a fee proposal. So Don has all of that. We'd be happy to get it to you. Mail it tomorrow to the board members.
Just want, don't want it to be the impression that it's not public. It is public.
Right, and we would have them.
Anyone who wanted it could have had it. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't make the difference.
Would have been nice to have it here since it was on the agenda.
Well...
It should have been then. It should not be kept in anyone's pocket.
It was done in committee.
All right.
Well, the fair, but nothing should be voted on, nothing six-figure should certainly be voted on in a bubble in the vacuum. 2,600 hours for that project, you know, for Fletcher Thompson, and it's unknown at this point, how much, how many hours are involved? But to Kelly's point about moving the referendum forward, 2,600 hours, I don't know how large their team is, that's a whole lot of time. And I will say to the full board, what I said in facilities committee meeting just tonight, there is a unanimous voice for the, for support of the renovations and repairs to Chapag. We need to move that forward. We can act quickly on that. I'd like to see this 41.4 broken out. What is the pre-K5? What is considered renovations to Chapag? I'd like to see the referendum question broken out, two separate questions about whether or not to consolidate and change the regional plan, and do people want to move forward with renovations and repairs to Chapag? I think that would make a cleaner vote. I think if the referendum goes down, it would be better understood which part was the problem, was the issue. I think we need to start parsing out these things because clearly, whether members want to acknowledge it or not, the pre-K5 is indeed going to be contentious and very difficult. The Chapag renovations can go forward. We don't have to wait 2,600 hours for that. We need to show the community as a whole, the education community, that we represent, that we are in good faith acting and can act swiftly where there is a unanimous voice. So why on earth not separate the referendum question?
I will say, Susan, as I said before, with regard to the questions, it's got to be approved by bond counsel. I can recall on a previous occasion, and I haven't spoken about this, but that we had bond counsel here at the time that we were prepared to do that, to formulate these questions, maybe we could have this person here, and we could go through that with the person, and then we could figure out with his, it was a hymn last time, his guidance, what the questions could be. But they have to be ultimately approved by the counsel. So I don't have a problem with that. If we can get, bring the guy here, if it's a man, sit him here, and find out what kinds of questions we could do, if that's possible, and then we can vote on how we want to do it.
So before approving this 41.4, can we get a breakout? What would be considered the pre-K5 and what would be considered the Chapag renovations?
I don't know if the committee has that with them.
Then can we table until then?
They did not break it out that way.
Yeah, well, it should be something with them.
And honestly, honestly, from my conversation, and Don can add to this, they're really doing the middle high school piece, kind of just as an add-on. So if they did break it out, that would be a very small amount because most of the work is with the pre-K5 because of state reimbursement, looking and working with the architect.
I get that, but because this is something that is worth exploring, you know, it could be worth just breaking that out? And wouldn't that seem like all the more manageable if the number was quite small with the Chapag Valley renovations and repairs?
Susan, I don't need to ignore you when you've asked this before, but proper procedure. If you want a motion to table, make a motion.
There's already a motion for this. I can't make a second motion on top of a motion.
If you want to make a motion to table her motion, make a motion to do that, and we'll vote on it. You keep saying to me, I think what you do is...
To separate out the referendum?
I thought you just said that you wanted to table the current motion until we got the documentation on the 41.4.
I'd like to make a motion to table the consideration of approving the 41.4, so it could be broken out. Appreciate that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we're moving seconded. Is there any discussion?
Jim.
Valerie.
Once again, we were all invited to the meeting, and we could have asked our questions there, and the detail is given to us. I don't see why we would do 102,000 to hire an architecture firm and not have the 41,000 for a project manager who's going to help coordinate these two types of issues, that is to say, the Chapag renovation and the new building. You know, if people can't come...
102 is only the pre-K5.
I know that. If people can't come to a meeting and see documentation, then why should we stop everything on the board level? I mean, the recommendation was made. If there were questions, there was a forum at 3 o'clock to present those questions. This is a recommendation by the building committee that we have authorized to do all of that, that hard work for us. I am satisfied with the recommendation. I do not feel the need to table it. I will vote against the motion.
I don't want to spend a lot of time on the motion to table.
Right.
We've heard everything. Michael?
I just want to point out, you know, I know Ms. Anderson's talking about how we have the committee structures, and I think we're all aware of the committee structures and the purpose of the committee structures. However, when, again, we're voting on a significant chunk of money, much as we do for finance committee, it's not procedure that we just say, "Well, whatever the finance committee says is fine with the rest of the board, and we're just going to give you thumbs up because that was done in committee." And I could go to a finance committee meeting because I'm on the board, even though I'm not a member of the committee. True. However, it's a significant amount of money that we're debating, so I think it would be reasonable to look at the breakdown. We're not saying that we need, you know, a 17-page document. I think, you know, a reasonable breakdown on what that 43,000, 41.4 would give us is not that much, would require a lot of time, would require a lot of effort for the board as a whole to see that number.
Alan?
Mr. Chairman, point of order. A motion to table is not debatable. We have a motion on the table. It's been moved and seconded. It needs to be voted on before we can have this discussion. It's not debatable. I've got Robert's Rules of Order motions chart, and a motion to lay on the table is not debatable. Requires a second, it's not debatable.
I don't have it in front of me. Alan?
Do you want it in front of you here?
Okay. All right, there's a motion to table, Valerie's motion, that's on the table. All those in favor of the motion to table, raise your hand.
Okay.
All those opposed, raise your hand.
Okay.
Any abstentions, Mr. Chairman? The motion to table fails. We're back to Valerie's motion, which is to approve pre-referendum cost of $41,500, $41,400 for project manager, Arcadis. Alan?
This stands, whether we're tabled or not, but I would say this either way, is that it's interesting that we're now saying that stuff that happens in committees, you're invited to, and if you don't get to it, you don't get it on the board. Usually, we do bring things. In fact, the policy committee that I'm on doesn't encourage you to come to our meetings, although you can if you want. But when we bring policy to you, we don't say, "Hey, you can't see them, but we got them. Vote yes, please." You have the policy in front of you. So I think this is specious, and unfortunately, it makes me think that as you can see the way the voting has been going tonight, it's as if these details didn't matter because the people who are going to vote for the money are going to vote for it either way, and the people who are going to vote against it are going to vote for it either way. So who could be bothered with the details? Because the votes are going to happen regardless, as you can see. I think, again, what I said earlier stands on this as well. And I know how much this smarts when I talk about what I know about the town of Bridgewater. And the reason it smarts so much is because of the interesting things I hear from the town of Washington. We had an interesting idea deep in the bowels of the long-range planning committee. It was the idea of carving a full one-quarter out of the school budget instantly by closing WPS and sending the kids...
Does this have to do with the motion?
Yes, it does.
Mr. Chair, is this about the motion?
You know...
Or are we going back to the beginning of the topic?
And when that idea was...
It's not a larger audience.
It was moved, the idea was you could close WPS and send the kids to Burnham and Booth. Each town would still have a school in, Washington would have its school, and the other two towns would have theirs split up.
Not a primary school.
Oh, yeah, you would have, you know, when a primary school, you have this building we're in right now. And that died instantly because Mark Lyons said, "No way." Somehow, he was speaking for his town, and there was no referendum of the far greater than 1,600, 1,700 members of Washington that are on Bridgewater. So I would just like to say, I will be chided for trying to speak for my town, but we have to realize that's quite common. And at this point, while we're facing 100 and some-odd, now I shouldn't say that, we're facing another $41,000 in expenses, I think I'm justified in speaking for my town to let the entire region know that this is a waste of money. Someone could speak for their town as they did two years ago and lop that idea off, which may not have been a good idea, or may have been a good idea, but the town never got to vote on it.
Could I?
I'm just saying right now would be a good time to pay attention to people who want to save the region some money.
All right.
Well, we had three first selectmen ask us to approve the exact motion that we approved on June 17th. Three first selectmen from three towns, Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington. And after consideration of a lot of labor, of a lot of committees in the long-range plan committee, and recommendations, we heard them, we considered, we debated, and we agreed, but the first three, the first selectmen of three towns, which included Bridgewater, surprise, surprise, it amazed me. And now we have an approved motion from June 17th, and now we're trying to follow that motion by putting some detail behind a generality, flesh it out, so we can actually present information to the population. And who knows if it's going to vote up or down in any of those three towns, because I believe in a democracy. I'm not going to sit here and veto something because I live in a certain town. I really don't know how this thing's going to happen, when it's going to happen. When we have a referendum, we have to have some flesh on the bones of the question. As of June 17th, we agree on that. This is the way to get the flesh. And just to sit there and everyone from Bridgewater vetoes everything all the time is ridiculous. This is democracy. You don't know what everyone in your town's going to want to see, and if we present something in a referendum that doesn't meet the standards of the people of the three towns, we're going to hear about it. Let it go. Let the people decide. And let's talk about the motion, which is for $41,400 for project manager. Period.
Michelle?
Done.
I just wanted to make a really brief comment because I have an issue with something Alan said, because I don't want it to, I take issue with the fact that it looks like if you support the project, you're just rubber stamping everything. Because when the project manager came up a month ago, it didn't actually go through because people felt that it was premature, that there were still some questions about parts of the referendum question, and we didn't need a manager yet because we were still clarifying things. So we are doing our due diligence and looking at the paperwork and the projects and the architects and everything that's being put before us, and would not do something irresponsible just because we feel that we want to rush something through. So I take issue with that.
Go ahead.
I really feel it's irresponsible to spend this 41,000, to spend a total of almost 150,000 on a project that doesn't exist. We need to find out whether the community wants to amend the plan, and then let's spend the money. This is, it's just simply irresponsible. I've also not gotten an answer to my question, Jim, which I've asked several times, about my belief that the question on the amending of the plan must stand on its own. It could be done during the same voting session, but it must be a separate question. I've asked you, I think now we're on the fourth or fifth time I've asked this question. I'd like an answer to that question. I don't think it has, it can be tied in any way to any number. There will be... We need to find out whether the community wants to amend the plan and then let's spend the money. This is, it's just simply irresponsible. I've also not gotten an answer to my question, Jim, which I've asked several times, about my belief that the question on the amending of the plan must stand on its own. It could be done during the same voting session, but it must be a separate question. I've asked you, I think now we're on the fourth or fifth time I've asked this question. I'd like an answer to that question. I don't think it has, it can be tied in any way to any number. Those will be separate issues on the ballot. So why don't we simply do what the board said they would do on June seventeenth and push this referendum forward on the calendar so we can have the communities vote? That's what our selectmen wanted. They wanted to let the communities vote on the proposal to consolidate the school and amend the plan.
To answer your question, I don't know the answer to your question. That will be up to bond counsel as to the actual structure of the ballot questions. I don't know.
Well, it's, we're getting into two thousand fourteen now and I think that's an important question to answer. I'd also like to see us put a date on this. We don't have a referendum date. When are we going to set a referendum date? I mean, as Susan pointed out, this sounds like this work could just go on for a very long time until someone has everything perfect. It has nothing to do with amending the plan.
We're shooting for the end of March, first week in April. That's what we're shooting for, but once we get a project manager and architect, we'll be able to work on that.
It's almost a year since the June seventeenth motion was made to put this to a vote. And just to answer Mr. Tagley, because he's brought it up a couple of times and he's not aware of this because he wasn't on the board at the time, but I was not at that June seventeenth meeting. I missed very few meetings. I did miss that one. But the chairman and the superintendent were informed that that was the one day, June seventeenth, that I could not be at a meeting. I had to be in Houston, Texas that day. There was no way around it. I asked them repeatedly in writing and in person to please not have a vote of that importance without the full board. They went ahead anyway. It's my regret.
Tony?
I'd just like to point out that I think if we were to go to work and follow what Kelly, I think, is trying to say is that just let's sort of, let's have a referendum question that says, let's change the plan of sixty-seven and vote either yes or no, that probably would fail in all three towns because people need to know, what does that mean? I mean, what part of it, I mean, the plan has fifteen pages to it. I mean, what are you planning to do? What is it going to cost us? I mean, that is a question that I think people in all three towns are going to want to know and I think that's why we're leading up to having the architects and the managers and project managers dispense information. It's not a lobbying thing. I mean, they are the ones that told us that they don't lobby. And of course, we didn't want them to anyway, but I mean, we need to get the information out. It's a lot more than just, you want the plan changed here, don't you? Because I believe, I don't know about Washington either, but I mean, I believe there's an awful lot of people that are going to say, what are you kidding me? What, what is it costing? What are you talking about? Change which part of it?
Okay. Kelly, just to answer you with regard to the June seventeenth meeting, I don't recall correspondence about that night that you couldn't make it, but with regard to board operations, when a meeting is called, there's a forum of the board. I'm not at liberty to hold off motion. I had no idea.
I understand that.
Peter made a motion to do exactly what you said, just have the question about amending the plan. The motion was to beat it. I couldn't say, Peter, gee, let's hold off on that. Hold off on that motion until Kelly gets here. I mean, I just don't have the authority to do that. If there's a forum of the board present, we go forward with business, people make motions, and that's the way it goes. So anyone else on the motion on the floor?
I'm about to move the question, just not formally yet. Can we like a little bit?
Alan. I appreciate all of this and I understand how you would have, it would be a lot trickier to tell people that are about to change the regional plan without letting them know that they changed it too. And that is a stumbling block there. And I know that Peter and I and Kelly have all wrestled with that. And it makes sense, I think, to be a little more specific and say, do you want to change the regional plan so that three elementary schools are not required, one in each town? And that might be a first step to be able to determine whether the regional plan will be changed in order to be able to close the schools, in order to be able to go ahead with the...
Alan, go right to the motion. The motion was to spend forty-one thousand.
Move, move. Move the question.
No.
Okay. Is there anything else? There's a motion on the table to consider, to approve the hiring of Arcadis as the project manager for a pre-referendum cost of forty-one thousand four hundred dollars. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Any abstentions, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Jim, are we having an executive session tonight?
No. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for the public to comment on agenda. I just wanted to like to ask you to approach the podium and just state your name and where you're from, please. Ma'am?
My name is Eileen Buckeye and as you will find from this corner of the room, I am from Bridgewater. I've been from Bridgewater long enough to live through this before. I'm from Bridgewater long enough to know that we vote. In fact, Mr. Reed will show you an article later on that says how much we vote. Now granted, Mr. Reed did not get every vote from every person in the town, but I can tell you, this is going to be the most unifying thing that ever happened at Bridgewater because people are going to come out in droves. This is not the first time. And by reinventing the wheel like this, you pour more money through the cracks. Now, a well-meaning but slightly dim board, I don't know how many of you were on it, voted to put an option on some swampland once before. That didn't fly either. And when I look at this vote, you can predict who's going to say yes and who's going to say no. Now, if that's an exercise in democracy, I have a bridge in Brooklyn. Because this is the big guys pushing the little guys around and the Supreme Court said, you can't do that. Now, the question remains, do we want to spend now more than a hundred thousand dollars to find out that that's the truth? Or would you like to table that until you have a referendum? And I find it ludicrous that it takes you five more months to verbalize a proposal to put before as a referendum. How many times do you have to say those words before it doesn't compute? It's ludicrous as this is.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Wainwright. I'm from Bridgewater. And I would like to point out that your building committee has no chairman. It has all Washington members, four Washington members, no Bridgewater members, no Roxbury members. I consider this to be a kangaroo committee.
I may just respond to that. Anyone is allowed to sign over any committee and I will put them on and I name the chairman. So apparently no one from Bridgewater volunteered for the committee.
And you have people who are not members on the committee, who are a Washington, is a Washington resident who is not a member of a committee.
Thank you.
So this is a board committee without a chair.
Hello, my name is Tom Seeger from Bridgewater. And Jim, I actually did offer to serve on that committee and you refused to put me on that committee. And it is all Washington members and all consolidators. One of the things that Valerie said earlier, you know, you all did have the right to go to these building committee meetings to see the interviews with the architects and the project managers. Sadly, none of you, hardly any of you showed up to that. I, for one, did and Ed was there too. I didn't say, I said hardly, I didn't say all of you did not show up. Interestingly, one thing that we did not hear is what the costs or the fee proposals from the other architectural firms were. I find it interesting to see that you chose a firm that is double what all the other architectural firms were. Antonazi and Associates, Public Relations, twenty-nine-five, Conceptual Design, twenty-five thousand. We go to Castle Booze, Pre-Referendum Services, forty-two thousand five hundred. We go to SLAM Collaborative, Preliminary Referendum Services, fifty thousand dollars. You just voted to pay one-hundred-and-four thousand dollars for services when it could have been done for half and not one of you asked what the other bids were. And I find that appalling. I also sat through and listened to what they were offering and I did hear that they were offering, and I'll call it a sell, you'll call it something else, they were offering to sell this to the communities. So it, you know, I do have a problem with that. The other thing that I don't understand and I think, I'm not sure who asked the question, I don't understand how Fletcher Thompson went from two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand five hundred dollars to a hundred and four. I would like to see what that breakdown is. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. The other thing I, the costs for the other project managers, what were those costs? What were, what were their fee proposals? Are we going to find the same thing that somebody would have done it for ten? Somebody would have done it for five? This board is just spending money without really looking at all the options. And those who sat on that board, I cannot understand how you could have chosen somebody at double the cost. The other thing I did hear while sitting through these interviews was the issue of the referendum vote. They, the superintendent specifically said that we need to allow enough time, should this referendum fail, to have another referendum. That means that you're not going to honor the vote, that the thing that you said you wanted and the thing that you were waiting to hear, you're not going to honor once you've heard it. You're going to just change the number and go back at it again. And I find that a disgrace. The other thing I'm seeing in looking at what you voted on here, Fletcher Thompson or, you know, is going to be one-hundred and four, this other one's forty-one thousand. I see duplication of services. They're both going to be working to sell these projects. And I know that for a fact because I sat at those interviews. So you can't tell me that that's not what, what was going back because I heard it with my own ears. I'm really disappointed with this board. I wish you would do your due diligence and just put this through as a referendum on whether or not we want to make a change to the regional plan, which mandates that we have an elementary school in each town. Because if you put that up, you'll have your answer. And when you do get an answer from a referendum, I hope that you'll abide by it.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. There's no executive session. So they're both adjourned.
So move.
All those in favor?
Thank you, guys.
We have the Trump vote meeting tomorrow night for those...